It is the twenty fifth day of June. Time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct this weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Davidson and I are in attendance. Mr. Bailey is out. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Chair of the Hall and Treasurer's Office.
Herb Cantu, Solid Waste.
Don Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Oh, Perkins. Can I procure?
And I'll write to you, guy.
Trent Triple County Clerk.
Thank you. Is there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
No changes. Okay, we have a ratification of Boise County's reappointment of Clay Tucker to the Central District Board of Health, term to expire six thirty twenty-nine. This is sort of an unusual situation because the Board of Health, we appoint a we have three members on the Board of Health and every other county and Elmore County has two members. Boise County and Valley County have one member. And unless it's a reappointment of a commissioner, then all the other counties have to approve it. And that's what we're doing here. This is Clay Tucker is a commissioner in Boise County. And they've asked us to approve his appointment. Is there any discussion?
No.
Well, I accept the motion.
I'll move to approve and ratify Boise County's reappointment of Clay Tucker to the Central District Board of Health, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? I'm in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Got nothing to deal. Bob, welcome to our meeting. Good morning. Okay, we got final ranking and approval of the preapproval list for civil engineering services. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, before this morning, unfinished business is the final ranking and approval of the preapproval list for civil engineering services. That's RFQ two four zero five five. The evaluation team was prepared to come to you this morning with the list. But as you recall, last week when we opened those proposals, we got eleven proposals. And so they got more than they thought they were going to get. So they're going to need a little more time to
We don't need one, right?
Yeah, well, we're gonna have, I think, up to five on this list.
Okay, alright.
So they'll need a little more time to review these proposals. So we'd like to request at this table to the July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four open business meeting.
Okay, is there any further discussion? I'll accept a motion.
We need to remove from the table first.
Oh, okay.
So I'll move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second the motion. I'll in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Now I'll accept the motion. Table again.
Now I'll move to table the final ranking and approval of the preapproval list for civil engineering services, RFQ two four zero five five. Ada County preapproved list for civil engineering services to July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Alright. Now we're moving into a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two nine nine two, ARPA resolution number forty, for the use of allowable expenditures, return transfer of unspent funds, reduction of grant fund awards, and closure of certain grants. Don, you want to give us a little hint on what's going on here?
Sure. Kevin, I have a question of Davidson. We, as part of our ARPA review, since we are coming up quickly on the expiration date for obligation, we decided to review all our current awards and release any funds that are not under contract. So we've also, we're also closing two awards. So I'll just give you a quick overview. We have five CDH awards currently. We're going to close one, which is the Esper, I'm sorry, the Provide. And we're going to, I'm sorry, Esper, this is really confusing, sorry. And we're going to transfer the remaining funds of seventeen thousand, three sixty-one to the Provide program, which is doing very well. So we're not extending the grant, we're not increasing the cost or award, we're just moving those funds. So that's one item. Second item is we changed the scope for the landscape or the landfill leachate system. Originally, they were going to build a third pond, so now they're going to do a filtration system. So we're approving that change of scope, no additional amount awarded. We are closing two awards, which is the EMS ventilators. And then we're also closing the wells feasibility study and returning fifty-two thousand, seven seven five to the grant. Yay. And then we have two point three eight seven million dollars for returning for uncontracted awards. So looking at all the current projects, these are funds that were proposed originally that we will not be utilizing under contract. We're gonna put that back in the general grant fund and utilize it for future projects. So that's where we are. I'm sorry it takes so long on that description.
That's fine. Now on that leachate thing, we're gonna be treating it now?
So we're looking at alternatives?
Yes, sir. Yeah, come on, yeah, come on. I think it's a pretty big deal. We're paying a buck a gallon or so to treat it now, right?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson. Yes, currently, we are hauling off a leachate from the landfill to roughly seventy miles south of here for removal of leachate in our current ponds. We are above our permitted capacity, so we're spending about a dollar a gallon to facilitate that activity.
Back to the transfer entry.
Yes. So that's roughly about half a million dollars we'll be spending this year to bring down that level of leachate. Currently, we're right almost at five hundred thousand dollars in cost. And we still have about six inches more to go in one of our ponds to get below the permitted free board. So we're hoping evaporation will help us get it there for the rest of the year. But as wet weather gets here later this year, we may have to do some additional pumping. So this project here will help us use, utilize technology to help us clean the leachate so that we can either put it into our existing ponds or allow us to put it into our existing retention basins a lot, as well as use it for dust control during the summertime as well. So it's much more cost-effective means to manage it where you can treat the leachate to have more flexibility on how you can now manage that material, which is now considered clean water at that point in time.
Is it possible?
We won't go to drinking water standards, but it's possible to do that. Technology is there to do that if you wanted to. But our goal is to
We don't need to, though.
We don't need to, that's correct.
It might cost a little more.
It costs a little more, exactly. So we want to avoid that.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any further discussion before I close the public hearing? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two nine nine two and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number two nine nine two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have a couple of unusual items. Approval of the order of annexation of Sharon Inglesby into the Whitney Fire District. I don't know what that's about, but I guess we're gonna approve.
You'll need to open and close public carries on those as well.
Oh, okay. Well, let's open the public hearing on approval of the order of annexation of Sharon Inglesby.
Well, yeah, I don't know if I've, I don't know if we've done this before, since we got elected in two thousand and twenty. I don't remember, but
I don't remember it either.
Apparently, we have the right to annex property into certain fire districts.
Apparently, there's an order of annexation. Okay?
Do you know anything about that?
I don't know.
I don't know. Well, I'll close the public hearing on the order of annexation of Sharon Inglesby. Englesby, I accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the order of annexation of Sharon Inglesby into the Whitney Fire District.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on approval of the order of annexation of Buffalo Hump LLC into the Eagle Fire District. The hearing being open, any discussion on Buffalo Hump being approved into the Eagle Fire District?
I mean, I'm assuming it was maybe part of a condition of approval to develop or something, but
It was, I don't know, but we'll find out.
I'm guessing this is just an administrative action for us?
Seems like it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing on the approval of the order of annexation of Buffalo Hump LLC into Eagle Fire District. And I'll call for a motion.
I'll move to approve the order of annexation of Buffalo Hump LLC into the Eagle Fire District.
Okay. You put a motion, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have ratification, we have some licenses, and we have catering permits. And we have a few licenses. Any discussion or question on any of the catering permits and licenses and transfer? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve and ratify the catering permit signed by Commissioner Beck on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including four catering permits, three license transfers, and one license renewal, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the
Second a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, we are fortunate to have our distinguished clerk with us today. You have any good news to tell us?
Mr. Chair, the ballot verifier is live. People want to look out for the May election. Some fascinating things on there to look at. Given that it was a primary, you can sort down to the precinct level for precinct committeemen. And one thing that caught us by surprise is the amount of ballots that were cast with undervotes on every single office except precinct committeemen.
Really?
So there were people that actually showed up and just voted for a precinct committeeman and nothing else on the ballot.
Really?
So again, interesting window into voter behavior. It's fun to look at. It's nice also to report that that's a pseudo external audit on us and we passed. So it's for citizens to go out and look and see if they want to audit themselves or audit us on the way we conducted the election. So another successful elections, ballot verifier, I think, would be a great tool for folks to go out and look at. So if you have interest, go check it out.
Okay.
That's all I have.
And how long does it take to get the ballot verifier up and running?
Well, we got it up Monday. We probably could have got it up early last week. Our goal going forward is to try to have the ballot verifier up before the end of the contest recount challenge period. So if people want to go on there and look before they actually issue a challenge or a recount request, that's another tool that they can use to help them make that decision whether or not they think it's worth either money they're going to spend on the recount or the time and effort they'll put into it. So that's the goal. We just missed it this time. We had said four to six weeks and we hit it at four weeks, which again is outside that window, but I think we can get it down within that window for the next several elections.
Did we have any recount?
We had no request for recounts.
So is the period for recount or challenge is over?
At the local level, yes. For the state level, it's today. If you're running a statewide office and you want to recount, today is the last day that you can request that recount.
We didn't have any statewide offices. We had a couple of congressmen, but
Yeah. Or I should say, those that are, when I say statewide, statewide level, it's not statewide, state offices, i.e.
Legislators.
Legislators and above.
Alright. I have another question on you. Are you doing the verification for that rank choice initiative? Or does the Secretary of State do that?
No, we're doing it.
You're doing it. Do you have them all done?
We're close. I think we probably have two or three thousand more signatures. That was as of last week, but I haven't been paying attention to it with budget going on, so.
So you do, the clerk's office does the verifications and then turns them over to the Secretary of State or turns them back into the
We upload the signature sheets to the Secretary of State and they have those available. And then the Secretary of State will determine whether or not they're, they've passed the threshold for being on the ballot.
What's their deadline for getting signatures in?
I think the deadline's passed. We're just now verifying.
No, but the deadline for the verification, there's a deadline for that too, is there not?
There is, yeah. I don't know exact date. I can get back to you on that, though.
Have they, based on your count, have they exceeded the amount of signatures required for Ada County?
My opinion, they will hit the mark, at least here in Ada County.
Close, or do they have substantial?
Did they shoot for every legislative district in Ada County?
I don't know if they shot for every single one, but they're hitting the minimums that they're required to get on the ballot. I think it's like eighteen or something across the state.
Yeah, it's eighteen. It's eighteen legislative districts. They have to have six percent verified in each of eighteen districts.
I don't think they're gonna have a problem with that.
Probably not. However, the Secretary of State, our former clerk, told me that there's probably gonna be a couple of lawsuits.
I'm sure there will be a lot of lawsuits regarding this.
And what's kind of interesting, because they've been advertised as open primaries. And the way I look at it, it eliminates primaries because there's four people advanced to a general election. There is no primary. Because that's what it does, it advances four. Anybody can file according to that proposal. And then four people advance to the general election. That's not a primary. That just eliminates a primary, as it seems to me, anyway.
I don't think state law forbids you from misrepresenting your initiative. It has to be written correctly in the petition. I think you can tell people whatever you want. Is that right?
I don't know. It's kind of weird if you can.
Sure there will be some legal battles considering
There are gonna be some difficulties in advance. You have County County ended up doing any recounts for this election?
They did three precinct committeeman recounts.
Okay. I heard they might be doing that.
Was there any change?
No, there was, there was probably about ten to twelve recounts across the state that were conducted and didn't change anything.
Is there a mark? Well, the only overvote is in precinct races.
Is it what?
It's remarkable that the only overvote is in the precinct races. They came and voted for the precinct, but nothing else on the ballot.
Yeah.
That's, that's remarkable, I think, because over the years, that's been a big undervote.
That was one that we saw. The other thing that we noticed was the split between what we consider countywide local races and the legislative state races. There were quite a few ballots that there would be votes that were cast for like district commissioner races and the sheriff and the prosecutor and then precinct committeemen. But they wouldn't vote for any office higher than that.
They would skip the races.
They would vote down ballot, but not any up ballot races. Normally, we see the up ballot races get voted and then the lower ballot races don't. But there was actually quite a few this time where all the lower offices got voted and the upper ones did not.
Did it vary based on if the legislative district was in competition or not?
We also saw a trend on that. If there was not a competitive race, there was a lot of undervotes. People just chose not to vote in those races.
Well, you can't blame them. That's just not the vote. There's only one name on the ballot. Hey, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very interesting. Thank you for that. Okay, next up, we have clerk's claims journal. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second the motion. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have some personnel actions. I'll accept the motion on personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, we have the Deputy Assessor here, Mr. Brad. Hi.
Good morning.
How are we doing?
Pretty good. We had our busiest day of the year yesterday in the assessor's office, and we all survived.
Oh, good.
That's a bonus.
Yeah, if you can just get them all resolved before they go to hearing.
True, true. That'd be really good. Our appraisers are doing their best. I'll run through a few statistics about the appeals so far.
How many appeals we have so far?
So at this point, it's moving target. At eight o'clock this morning, we were at three hundred and twenty-one appeals. And just keep in mind, for the next couple of days, snowmell will, as a melt comes in every day, they'll be loading more of those in. At this point
Because losses, if they're postmarked yesterday, they're
Exactly. Yep. So at this point, if we stay below the five hundred and four, which it seems like we're going to for the past twenty years, I mean, that'll be our lowest appeals that we've had. So we're pretty happy about that. At this point, we have a hundred and fifteen that are scheduled for hearings. Obviously, we'll be having more coming in, but our appraisers are doing everything they can to make sure, you know, if they can talk to the
How many of those hundred and fifteen are residential? How many are commercial?
I don't have the, I didn't have time to break that down, but a large percentage of those are commercial. So tomorrow, and it's gonna be probably, if I take a swing at it, probably about eighty of those are gonna be commercial. So tomorrow, we have about twenty-seven residential hearings.
For the day.
For the day, which is quite a bit. Usually, they take about fifteen minutes each. So you can really get about four hearings in an hour. But in most cases, not everyone shows up to their hearing and/or we might resolve it the night before or even the morning of. So even though the schedule looks kind of crazy, it will dwindle down. You know, all the appraisers are doing their best. Everything else is on hold. They're just focused on working with the appallants, looking at the information they have. And I just want to say thanks to your staff, because I've been here a long time. And back in the day, we would have piles of appeals, just the paperwork. And every one of those would have to be photocopied and we'd come over here and Judy can remember these days. And we'd drag them over to our house, our place. We'd try to help scanning. The appraisers wouldn't be able to see them for a day or two, so they're frustrated. So they'd be trying to get in there, grabbing some of them before we got them copied, and would lose some. And it was just a mess. And I can just say all the work that your staff has done, like doing the where the appellants can file electronically and stuff, and just the new scanning ability and everything. Stuff comes in, I mean, within minutes in our office, somebody came in, you know, I said, pull one up yesterday. Within minutes, basically both go into the paperclip and see that appeal just instantly and see what the, what the appellant, you know, has concerns about. And time is of the essence, because we know how fast the hearings come around. So for the appraisers to have that information is just so helpful. I mean, it just really helps us. I just want to say thanks to all your staff. I know they work hard. It's probably the busiest day of their year, too.
Oh, yeah.
And Kat is also in there in the mix, so.
We, how long were we here last night?
We left at seven, but Kat was there until ten.
Who was?
Kat.
Oh, really? Till ten?
Yeah, so we really appreciate it.
And that's really good. That's, we appreciate our staff as well. Thank you.
Overall, we're doing great. We feel really good. Typically, we'll still complete the output of our schedule. And so far, it's, it's, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be easy street, but we're feeling pretty good about it so far.
Well, that's pretty good, because normally the, my number of appeals doubles after, once the last day. Because a lot of people wait till the last day. And after that, that's really good.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Historically, we've been up to three thousand before. And what we're dealing with, three hundred and twenty-one at this point, I mean, that's, makes a world of difference, so. Yeah, that's
Are you seeing any trends in the, in the, in the appeals? Are there rational appeals or any trends? And the ones that you've looked at or that you staff have looked at?
Yeah, I haven't seen any rural trends. I'm, just the commercial is getting hit hardest. And I'm guessing a lot of it is probably coming from that tax shift that took place where the tax bills were just paid, you know, and there was no credits. Very minimal credits for the commercial properties for the residential, especially the owner occupied. So I think some of it's kind of playing into those credits that the legislature passed to kind of help.
Are some of these commercial appraisals, are some of them like apartments and
There's, there's a pretty good mix in the, in the commercial. And there's big groups of them, too, so they're not as, some of those can all be addressed as one, so, and same with the overall, I haven't seen any real patterns yet.
Has Walmart filed yet?
They have.
Well, of course they have. And they did every one of their stores, right?
So, and we did file to district court with Walmart, so that will stack up for two years. So
The courts haven't ruled on their last years?
Support of tax appeal actually lowered their values. And then we appealed those decisions, and we're taking them to district court. So, so we're in the process of, it'll probably be out, I guess, close to a year before we get resolution there. So in the meantime, it's pretty typical that they would
Stack up.
File, you get that stacked up, and then if there's a decision by the court, it would, it could affect two years.
So are you, has your office been bound by the Board of Tax Appeals for the arguments they're making this year? They make the same arguments?
It's, as far as this, you're talking
So if they use the same, if Walmart uses the same arguments this year as they won on, on appeal last year, are you obligated to sign off on it?
No, no. So we're looking, I mean, we don't agree with that, so I mean
That's why, that's why you're appealing it to the district court.
Correct, correct. So this will be, and every year is a new year, too, but we don't agree with methodology that they use to value their stores, which is kind of a, we'll say kind of as-is, basically a second tier use of it versus, I mean, Walmart built these stores for them. They're still using the facilities as, as a Walmart. And their, their methodology is, kind of treats it more if they were to sell it and somebody else, another user came in and used it as their methodology, which we don't, we don't agree with. That's not typical.
Didn't the Tax Commission kind of shift their, their analysis as well?
Yeah, there was, there was some, multiple appeals that, Board of Tax Appeals. And one of their decisions seemed to correspond with, with our methodology. And then with Walmart, it did not. So that kind of confused us, because they got it right on this one, but not on this one. And that's one of the reasons we're filing to district court.
Is that admissible? You know, bound with lawyers. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll find out.
Alright, well, good.
Now, do we have to uphold the Board of Tax Appeals
No.
rationales from last year? If they, so if Walmart says, hey, this is, we already got a ruling a year ago, you're obligated to follow that in your decision. Or do we start from scratch?
Start from scratch.
Start from scratch every year, actually.
So there is a Board of Tax Appeals law that states, it came from Law of Cobb's, you may remember him.
Oh, yeah, I remember that one.
He passed a law, and it's just for Board of Tax Appeals, that if, basically, if they adjust the value, that it stays locked in for the following year. But there's a little caveat in there that if it's filed, if that decision is appealed, then that does not apply. So, so initially, we locked, the Board of Tax Appeals decisions came in by statute, they have to come in by May first. And we, I mean, they waited till the very last day to send those. So we had already locked our values. When it came in, we locked it, then we decided to file to district court. So we actually adjusted those, because that makes the law not valid, not valid, but
It makes the, that, that decision puts it in question.
Correct. Correct, so we can as, we can assess it at market value the following year. Thank you for helping out.
Are they gonna be at the end of the agenda this year for all of our hearings?
Um, that, I can't, I haven't seen when they're on the agenda, but most of the commercials pushed. As we head, head to you and.
And, okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, appreciate your support during the budget too.
Thank you, oh, yeah. Get those two treasures hired.
We will. Might have to wait till October first.
Oh, yeah. Alright. Okay, Treasurer's Office.
Hello, Tim. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davison. I'm here on behalf of the Treasurer's Office, just to provide an update on our, our activities this past week. And, uh, we're just basically wrapping up the bulk of the second half collections. The twentieth, as you're aware, was the, the due date, so, um, per Idaho code, we applied the two percent late charge. And, uh, into our property tax system, and then of course, uh, interest. Uh, unfortunately for homeowners who didn't get that paid in time, interest for the second half goes all the way back to January first, so. They're hit with a nearly eight percent charge yesterday, that one day.
How many, uh, how many people got the, the fine?
Well, we, we're not, I, I don't know how many of them, um. Numerically got it, but I, I did bring some stats on the collections. Our total charge for the year, uh, for, uh. Twenty twenty-three was seven hundred and twenty-nine million, and for the first half collections, we've collected ninety-nine point six seven, so. Nearly all of the first half has been paid. The second half collections, we've collected ninety-six point seven one percent. And they're still, uh, you know, the snail mail's trickling in, so today, we'll have some of that and it'll be timely. But as this week goes on, we'll see less and less than that, uh, with the twentieth or, or prior. And so, the bulk of them, uh, have paid, and that's pretty typical. Our overall collections are ninety-eight point two percent. For the entire year, and so, right in line with what we're used to seeing from year to year.
Is there any statute that, uh, that, I know that they, uh, the statutes call for the payment on the twentieth of. Are there any statutes that, uh, uh, recommend when the bills should be sent out?
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if there's a, a specific code that describes that. We, there, there may be, I'm just not familiar, uh, right now with that.
Well, I'd look at it and see if you can get it after that primary election.
Okay, yeah, that, uh, you know, uh, it seems like that has come up in the past.
Well, I'd just, I'd just take a look at it anyway and see what the, see what the law requires.
In November, we tend to do it right around the eighth, ninth, and tenth of year to year, that's what we see.
That's after a general election.
We'll go ahead and definitely.
I'd take a look at it.
Take a look at it. In, in November, they'll probably be hitting mailboxes, uh, probably fifteenth and, and later. And, uh. We try to do it about a month before, at least a month.
Well, that's more than a month, fifteen.
It is, yeah.
It's twentieth of December and if they, they mail it on the fifteenth, that's more than a month advanced. And the highest percentage of taxes are paid by the mortgage company and, and, or a service or nothing, anyway. Isn't that a high percentage?
It is a high percent. Um, this most recent tax collection period, we collected. About two hundred and fifty million thus far, for the second half. Now, that was during this kinda month or so. A lot of the payments for the second half were paid in December, and I think the, we saw that. Because of the, uh, tax relief that was provided. Uh, we've had many calls over the past couple of weeks. Where people have said, I ha- haven't got my bill, I wanna, you know, make sure and get that bill. We look it up in the system.
So they were, they were thinking that.
Just because they paid the little thing.
They were thinking that was just for the first half.
Yeah, so, so there was a lot of pleasant surprises there for people. Uh, of the two hundred and fifty million that we just collected. We had three large bulk payments from mortgage companies. One was seventy-eight million, another was twenty-four million. And, and the third one was ten million, so that's, you know, a hundred and twelve million or so.
That's a high percentage.
It is, it is a high percentage.
And, and I understand the reason it will be a high percentage, is if you've got a mortgage on your property. The requirement, you have a, 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 a trust account or a, to pay it.
Escrow.
Escrow account, you pay it, yeah. So, well, that's, uh, that's good. Well, I check into when you send the, the second half out again.
Definitely do that and see if there's.
When the requirement is, if there's a law that, that suggests it has to be out at a certain date, well, of course, we'll follow the law, but. I think we should try to make it, make, make it so that doesn't interfere with the elections.
Yeah, well, uh, this year, for sure, it'll be after, because I believe they're November the fifth, does that sound right?
Uh, yeah, they're November fifth this year.
And, and we won't even apply the tax charge until after that date.
Right, right.
So, but, but I'll definitely follow up on that.
Well, good. Well, thank you. You got anything else?
No.
Okay, well, great. Any questions, Phil?
Alright, good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving into, uh, Expo Idaho. We have, uh, an interim, two interim events, and we have. A number of, uh, commercial exhibitors getting ready for the fair. Any question or discussion on any of those? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve two interim event agreements and sixteen commercial exhibitor agreements as listed on the agenda. Authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have six agreements. Any question or discussion on any of the agreements?
Herb, looks like one of these are your bulldozers. You wanna talk about those?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davison. Agreement number is three zero seven five, along with amendments three zero seven five dash one dash twenty-five. And agreement number three zero zero eight one, along with amendment number three zero zero eight one dash one dash twenty-four. Are for the acquisition of a D eight dozer and an eight thirty-six compactor. Um, over the last five months, I've had the opportunity to assess the site operations and have identified that our fleet is a little undersized. Along with, um, u- utilizing some of the wrong equipment for pushing our refuse. Um, currently, we have one D eight deals are on site. In addition to that, we're using, um, some loaders to push the trash, and traditionally, loaders aren't designed to push trash on soil. They're historically utilizing transfer stations and what have you. Um, so the D eight dozer is our primary workhorse for pushing refuse. And the workface of the landfill. And since we do not have a backup dozer, anytime that unit goes down for preventive maintenance. Uh, or rebuild on the undercarriage, or just unexpected downtime, we have no secondary means to. Facilitate operations of the landfill. Uh, so we have to use a D six dozer essentially, which is primarily used for. The fine tuning of the operations, covering outside slopes, et cetera. Um, so it's imperative that we have a backup unit to help us sustain operations in, in an efficient manner out there. And same thing for the compactor. Um, we have two compactors out there on site. Ideally, you'd like to have two on the working face. Anytime one goes down for preventive maintenance, repairs, um, there is no backup unit to ensure that we have sufficient machinery on site. For compaction purposes, so this will help us better prepare for implementation of pancake compaction that we're looking at doing this fall. In addition, we've also done a lease versus buy analysis, and over the fifty-one month period for the two units. It's more cost effective to buy rather than lease. Um, if we purchase, roughly, we'll save roughly a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Just a little more than a hundred and eighty-three thousand for the dozer, and we'll save roughly another, uh, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. With purchasing the compactor versus leasing for that same duration of time. Um, additionally, if we buy these units now, we'll, um, have savings of roughly fifty-four thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-five pricing. Uh, for the dozer, and we'll be saving a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the purchase of a compactor next year. So these units are essential to helping us, uh, move forward in our operations. Uh, the amendments are primarily to help us clean up some language to improve our protection acts. Was very helpful in that effort, to help us, uh, clean up the language in our sales agreement along with CBA. Um, the CBA essentially is necessary for us to facilitate maintenance outside the warranty period. Um, that gives us a discount with Western states to maintain our assets outside the warranty period. We do have three assets that are outside the warranty period. It's two compactors we're currently leasing along with the D six dozer. Um, so that CBA will help us keep our costs down for maintenance outside the warranty period.
These newer used equipment?
These are new, the D, indeed, uh, the.
What's the, what's the, uh, what's the, uh, the wait time to obtain them?
Thank you for that question. Uh, these are within a few months out, which is great. Typically, your lead time is up to twelve months for these assets. And so they have a unit, I think, that's in Illinois for the compactor, and a D eight dozer in Texas, so that's.
They just take out a truck and bring it up there?
That's correct. Yep. It's good news.
Well, cause I know, I know that in the, uh, in the past, somebody might order a, a dozer, it takes a couple of years to.
It can. During COVID, it was up to eighteen months.
Yeah.
Yep, it was pretty, pretty extensive.
They've got their lead time.
Supply chain has significantly improved over the last, I would say, year and a half.
These are already built, cause, cause they have to be built a little different going to landfill.
Correct. The dozer has to have a waste handler package. Uh, the compactor, same thing, has to have the undercarriage components. Uh, designed for the continuous wrapping up refuse while, as it's, uh, traveling over trash. Um, so both of them are designed for the waste arena.
Well, that's good. And, uh, as I understand it, uh, there's some air, there's some, uh. Um, items in your twenty-four budget that you didn't use, that you're able to use.
That is correct, so we had budgeted, uh, funding for a dump truck, a large excavator, um, supermater fencing. Um, those assets can be deferred till next year. It's, I felt it was imperative that we get our workhorses at the working face. Uh, addressed first before we look at anything that's ancillary or supportive type assets. We could defer those till next year.
Okay, well, great. Any other questions?
No, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Well, good, well. It's, 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 uh, are these gonna be fleet vehicles?
It will be inventory. I wanna check one out for elections.
There you go. That'd be interesting, driving a big D eight cat around. Alright, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Alright, I'll, I'll accept the motion on the agreements.
I'll move to approve the six agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? We've had a pretty good discussion. I'll favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Herb. Okay, we have, uh, weekly indigent items.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. And authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have an application for a trademark, Ada County Victim Services Center. Is there any discussion on this?
Well, this is for the, uh, the, the graphic design of the, of the logo?
It's for a trademark of the design, yes. That's just filed with Secretary of State. Any, uh, discussion?
Well, I think this is the first one of these we've done too, so.
May I be in? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to, uh, approve, uh, the request for application of a trademark for the Ada County Victim Services Center.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any further business needs to be brought before the Board? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you. Well, good morning. Uh, today is June twenty-fifth, uh, the time is nine forty-five. Uh, the Board is in session, acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District. For its, uh, weekly open business meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda map? No changes. First item up is a claims journal. I'll accept a motion on the claims journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated June twenty-first regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a couple of personnel, uh, one personnel action. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
We have no EMS, uh, here to give us an update, so, uh, if there's any, unless there's any further business, we'll adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you.